This group was not required to require anything, it was more just to keep it as a conditional use. So we can talk about that. We had some discussion about these small detached accessory buildings and we said right now the ordinance has it that any detached accessory building has to have box deaves on it. And we were changing that so that anything less than 200 square feet or less would not have to have box deaves, but those that are larger would. So that's something we kind of discussed before. There's some new language in there and this is on page... This is stuff we have not discussed quite yet, on page 21. This, the very top part there, works in red. These are things that do not have to be setback requirements that apply to other structures. And what I'm adding there in the red is just a review of some other ordinances that I've worked with or that are in the area, things that they exclude and those lists of things there are what comes from them. So like wall sidewalks, which are just things like that. The trees, shrubs, and plants, we've talked about in terms of the next section, which has to have fence regulations in a site triangle at the corners. So even though those wouldn't have to be setbacks, the trees, shrubs, and plants, they would still be subject to those height restrictions so they didn't block the corners. You can follow this sort of path. Just below that, in letter C, under three C, that's where it talks about things like uncovered porches, terraces, steps, stoops, things like that. Current ordinance says that those can be within two feet of a side line if it's inside of a brick block. If it's at the corner, it has to be 15 feet. That's showing there is reducing that to a 10-foot setback, just for those kinds of structures. So that's something to discuss, that's all these. Can we get into the fence regulations? Well, okay, so letter F, before I go to fence. Letter F has to do with what size building has to meet setbacks. Right now, any size has to be five feet from the interior side back line and 15 from the side back corner lot, side lot. What was in there is that if you have a structure that's less than 48 square feet, then it can be two feet away from the property line, just that the fence could... So it gives you enough room to get around it and paint it or stain it or do something else outside of that container. But it does allow you to be closer. Those are changes related to smaller structures and setbacks that have to be.
It still has to stay out of that, in a triangle, through corners.
Yeah, anything would have to stay out of those site triangles, that's more than four feet tall, I think, as well. So that's the next section about fences, and we had quite a bit of conversation about that, so I won't spend a lot of time right now on that, except to say that it's basically the same as what you probably recommended from council. We did talk too about raising the height from four feet to six feet in the front yard. Is that it? No. And then, unless you want me to stop?
Oh, keep going.
Okay. Number six in my summary there, new structures on non-conforming lots. And so this has to do with that impervious coverage limit. Right now, we have a 75% impervious coverage limit for presidential lots and we're reducing that so that they can only cover 33%. And then they have a scale, the larger their lot, the more they can start to cover again. So overall reduction, most people can cover their lots. On page 20... Or page 30? Right now, this is a whole section on criteria that we would apply to conditional use permits. Right now, the city ordinance doesn't really have any specific criteria that are supposed to be followed or met when somebody applies for a conditional use permit. The state doesn't set any criteria like it does for variances. For variances, the state kind of tells us what those criteria are. For conditional use permits, they completely have to look at the local government, so... This is just a way to kind of put some structure around how you look at conditional use permits. A conditional use permit is going to be pretty case by case anyways because it applies to all kinds of different things and all kinds of different properties. And so there's, you know, this isn't really rigid. It gives you a lot of flexibility to kind of still make decisions based on what's best for the community and everything, but it does put some, a little bit of structure, some boundaries around it. I think the idea there is to help you as you make your decisions so that you know what criteria you're going to apply to these. And it helps the applicant know what criteria you're going to apply in the public in general, so... It's got kind of three sections there. One is three A, those are four criteria that have to be met. Kind of basic things in there. B is things that have to be considered, don't necessarily have to be met strictly. And then section four has to do with additional conditions that you can put on a conditional use permit. If you think that is justified, that you either have collar fencing or favorable setbacks or whatever it might be, more parking spaces, then otherwise you will not require a... And this gives you, kind of puts everybody on those. And then the rest of it just has to do with pretty much kind of cleanup things. There's a number of places in the ordinance where it mentions special uses or special use permits and that's kind of an outdated term that's really been replaced by conditional use permit. In a lot of ways, they're kind of the same thing, so we're just trying to clean that up. There's a section in there about apartments that just doesn't seem to apply as far as I can tell from talking to city staff up in around Longwood where I am. And I have been saying, the rest of it's kind of... So, those are the changes we can go through and run if we want and see how far we get to the public.
Hearing, I'll give it out to the public now. He has anything to say?
This had a different topic altogether.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to give you an update on our... You guys were part of the deciding factors of approving or disapproving those evergreen townhomes we built over there on DeRozier. And I just wanted to give you an update that, you know, during that hearing process here and with the council, there was a lot of misspoke untruths, conjectures, I mean, just across the board BS. And that approved, thankfully, through you folks in the council. It's been a total success. We have four vacancies, it's almost full. It's 75% retirees living in town. The rest are professional folks or, you know, two small families. And it worked out great. And I just wanted to tell you guys things and I don't think you get a lot of feedback on decisions you make on things like this. Because I attended those hearings at your level and at the council and I just heard just so much BS. It just, I wanted to just let you know that. You probably hear every story that's ever been told from people. Anyway, it worked out great and thanks again and it made the town better. And better's good, so...
That's...
That's my statement.
That's something the planning commission has to take into account is try to work your way through some of the bull. Because you hear a lot of things, you know, rumors that that was low-income housing and so forth and...
We all know what it was, that's it. Kind of like the political ads we just went through. The Trumpster and Hillary, you know, so... Anyway, just wanted to let you know that's how it ended up and we're glad for you, so...
Well, it does apply in some ways because we have to look at, even making our decisions or recommendations concerning chapter 11 here, we have to look at all aspects of things and... And we had to do that with that parcel out there, so... Anyone else wish to speak?
Yeah, and I'm going to stay on topic. I'm going to be terse. We're having this hearing tonight specifically because Erin and Becky Olson asked for a favor from the city. And since April, when that fence permit was granted to them illegally, even forget the six-foot-high fence part, that's an obstruction of you according to your law. That fence has been up illegally all this time. Too many times, I've seen that kind of stuff happen in this city with all kinds of bodies, not just this body, but others. That's wrong, simply wrong. We're having this discussion about six-foot-high fences because Becky and Erin Olson asked for it.
That's your...
That, there, there's been no other requests. There, that's the reason. Let's be clear with the public, and this is my time to talk. That bothers me, that this body continue, and this city staff, continue to make decisions like that. Giving out favors for certain individuals. It is a fact that this law that we're talking about, under the E section, right here, states on a corner lot, nothing shall be placed or allowed to grow in such a manner to impede the vision of a height of two and a half feet and a 10-foot above center line. But the current law says within 25 feet of the street. This body is considering changing that law to 10 feet to allow that fence to stay up. That's the only reason. There was, there were inquiries by not just me, but other people. And there was no other reason for this body to be even considering this topic, except a favor given to them. And I just want to state emphatically, I think that that intersection is more unsafe now with that fence. And I'll tell you something else. If the city's going to allow that fence to stand and change this law, then you need to do something with the amount of space that a car has to park behind a stop sign. Because Erin Olson parks his high-top truck and his boat really close to that stop sign. I was driving over there the other day, didn't take a photo of this, but should have. You can't see that stop sign. That is, when you're going from west to east on Fifth Avenue, there is no sight of that stop sign until you're right there. Just something to think about. I don't know why in the world there aren't yellow markings up to every stop sign to the legal restriction, especially right there.
We'll discuss that a little bit after the public hearing. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close this public hearing at 7:14 and go into the discussion. Do you say to that, there's no facts behind where a change in ordinances had to show favor to anyone? There's never been any discussion about that, so...
Personal opinion, just...
It's just personal opinion. And plus, the fence height thing hasn't been approved yet. We're working on chapter 11. We're going to take this whole thing and put it behind, in front of the council, now make a decision then. We're just giving recommendations now, so it's not law yet. So that's not correct either. Anyway, page 20, just to get some kind of discussion brewing here. It does mention 18 feet as far as height of the building. And we don't have anything in here even addressing that. Do you feel as a committee it's something that we should have been looking at and come up with some kind of recommendation and so we can discuss if we should raise that height limit and under what conditions? What do you feel as a county, I mean, a...
Absolutely, I think we should just strike the whole second sentence. Let's just go with no accessory, no one shall exceed the height of the principal building.
So they can build it right up to this exact height. But that would mean you might have some... House buildings that are 28 feet high. That's getting a little excessive.
Is that compared to what?
Again, I imagine what if you've got a two-story house, that'll always build a two-story garage just because it's the same height?
We didn't want to go with bigger footprinted garages so you can gain your space back by putting a full second level there.
I didn't have a problem with it.
I mean, it's going to look like it, like America did, pre-1955 ranch, one-level Lego block houses. Where houses will have garages of these called carriage houses that you can tap on, this is minimal. And it looks good. Is every house going to be that way? Generally, everybody always talks about the old part of downtown, but all of old downtown generally has close to the same height houses. I mean, my house is within a few feet of the neighbor's house, which is within a few feet of the neighbor's house. Unless one has been torn down and something's been rebuilt. And even a lot of those that have been rebuilt are two-story houses and they match you fairly close to the architecture. I mean, I think putting all kinds of rules in here just makes it so complicated and then people got to come in and they have to waste time to get a conditional use permit just to make everything they have look like, look the same. Is, you know, and that generally is more aesthetically pleasing to everyone.
If you have an attached garage, you can go to the exact height of the house.
Yes, or even if it's...
If you want.
Yeah, even if it's only attached by a breezeway, as long as your footings match. So what difference does a detached garage have?
Maximum height in the R1 and R2 districts right now is 40 feet for three stories.
That would be a high garage.
I'd like that garage.
That's a three-story garage there.
Three-story garage, you could have, or three-story, you could have a three-story garage.
Yeah, if, like, is that if it's attached, then we don't have this restriction on the height, plus under that 40 feet.
So why would we want to have a detached garage have a different set of rules on it?
Yeah, usually when I see that somewhere, it's because the detached is, is off by itself. It sticks out more than if it was attached to the house, I guess. I'm not saying that to say that's the right way to do it, but I'm just saying that's actually the discussion.
Yeah, that's a school of thought, but on a 80 by 150, how far apart are they really going to be to meet all your setbacks? Even on a larger block, they're not going to be, to meet all the setbacks they need to do. And as far as blocking views or sunshine or any of that, all the great material trees that we have left in town are already blocked just as much, they're 40 feet taller, taller.
Yeah, it was pre-Frank Lloyd Wright where houses were taller. Then you went through that whole era where everybody wanted a ranch style and the one-story houses spread out more. You looked out in places in the cities, it was like that, now they're changing that again because they want a larger home. Let's go back to the two-story, so go back to the two-story and higher building.
There's places in town where I don't know where I get my, get my truck in all those garages. I mean, that's a little less structure for these, today's vehicles and stuff.
Yeah, I've got a 1950's one and a half car garage and it might fit, might fit in.
Have to turn my mirrors into mine.
But... And that might be, that's got to be pushed in at 18 feet of foot height.
I'm all favorable of you. The only is this high of a garage can be that, I don't know.
I think simplify it, that's the biggest thing.
There should be so few variance requests, it just should be, this is the rule. I mean, we tried our best to make it as narrow as we can, in my opinion.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman?
And I'm feeling bad about your six-foot fence sale as a poster.
That's all right.
Kind of the flip side of this too is if somebody has the small rambler, the one-story rambler, and they want to put in a, maybe some people consider a normal-sized garage or normal-height garage. Is that something where you still want to limit it to the height of the house or is it something where they get a minimum height?
I think so because aesthetically, it just doesn't look great with the garage. It looks like a farm, like a barn with a house.
That's what it's going to do though, right? The height of the house, so that wouldn't change.
I mean, but I'm just thinking you might have like a one-story, you know, with a 312 pitch on it that's going to be, you know, eight-foot sidewalls and then you, you know, it's maybe 14 feet, 15 feet tall to the house.
Are there any flat houses in town yet?
There are a few here.
So that would mean their garage would have to be an eight-foot-high flat. Or even hard to lift up the hood if you hit it to the ceiling, but...
A lot of it doesn't really need to be up to the middle of the door.
So I mean, I'm not talking about, I mean, obviously, I think in a more rural setting, you can have lots of one-story homes that have big, huge pole sheds. And that's, you know, where the pole shed is twice the size and twice the height of the house. But in a case where somebody has that real low one-story and they want to put in a 15-foot-tall garage or 16-foot-tall garage, is that something you want to put in because the house isn't that high? Or do you want to allow up to that, you know? If they have that situation, then go up to 15 feet or up to 16 feet.
Well, that's something I think should be written in there. You wouldn't want them putting in a 40-foot-high garage with a 12-foot-high house. You know, you could change it to the height of the primary building or maximum, which you can do with your general screen. Are 18 feet or 18... Like the old ordinance, maximum of 15 feet if a house is... Rambler style or flat roof.
The greater of the height, exactly the opposite of what we have now. It's set at 18 or less, that's 18 is the minimum maximum, and the height of the primary is the maximum maximum.
And we don't want footprinting, I don't know why we want that.
I hate it. So you like to stick with the 18-foot height?
I like to stick with the maximum, with the primary structure. If you have 12-foot, if you have a 3'12 pitch, which I think you can build, more like 412 than it's been.
You do a 412?
Put a 412 garage, if you have 12 by 12 houses, you need a 12 by 12 garage. But that's 1400 minutes too. I don't know, I got a prime example, my backyard, little dwarf house, um... Huge garage, looks absolutely out of place.
That thing kind of slid through the cracks then years ago. There's also a couple parcels in town, I noticed, just have garages and houses. How that got through...
It got through, it was town subdivided, made a bone check to see if anything there. That's how that made through, so you think you're coming for a couple, for sure.
It's still, it's hard for me to fathom why, if you have a whole house, there are some houses that 11, 12-foot high to peak, you can't build a garage at that, you know, even with a 412. You're not going to have the 44ers to get in.
They clearly get stuck on the conditional use, but they're... Hearing, to address those, maybe a couple, maybe a couple hundred cases, and to... And to simplify the rest of the areas.
So what would you weigh that against at their garage? As long as it looks like the neighboring garages doesn't exceed their height or... It would be tough to...
So then you can have a bigger garage because your neighbors got a bigger garage, we're back in the same...
It just can't...
Me too. I kind of like the idea with 18-foot, you can go to 18 feet or the height of your primary residence? With some, again, some exceptions, like a three-story house, a three-story garage.
And the house... House designs have changed a lot since that ordinance came in. What year was that, 1972 you said, or...
24 was the original, then 96 would have changed.
So, you know, the whole, everything built back then was different. We're getting higher houses, people are looking at building upward because you can heat the bottom floor and it's easier to heat you upstairs.
Steeper pitches.
Steeper pitches. Aesthetically more pleasing. Maybe it's time to revise this a bit.
Much easier, nice things.
You know, if we took the 1400 square foot minimum or maximum, well, we're looking at it this way, because if you got, what's the average width of the garage? It's going to be at least 24.
24 foot.
Probably, but sometimes. So if you went 24, so it's 12 foot, there are another four foot on top of the sidewalls, right, with a 412 pitch.
Maybe 412, yeah.
So you get an eight-foot sidewall and another four foot, that's 12 foot tall, tall right there.
People are tending to go to more like a 612 pitch nowadays for low bearing...
So if you have a 612 pitch, that's higher than if you have a taller sidewall, then eight feet, which a lot of garages have.
Well, they have eight foot, they have roll locks, you can get an eight-foot door in them or whatever, so you...
I'm just, I'm just trying to come at this, like, if you had a reasonably sized garage with a 412 pitch on it, what would your height have to be to make that work? And maybe that's, you know, what everybody gets at a minimum.
So 12-foot high is what you're talking about?
Yeah, I guess if you look at it that way, then yeah, that 12-foot tall would be sort of the minimum.
And if the garage is 30 feet wide, it kicks it up a bit. All your houses are 12-foot tall. There's a few... Not too many. It's going to be, just a flat roof, basically. Basically, a house that high would look like a garage. I don't know, I like, I like the fact, you know, you can build it up to 18 feet max if you have a lower building or go with a conditional use or something. But I still don't like without a 40-foot-high garage, just... It's that 40-foot-high house, so... Yeah. Well, I'm not the only guy here, it's just a preference thing. So you want to look at that, Ben, and change that up a bit? What's the conjecture here? So everybody basically want, want that 18-foot with the maximum at the height of the house? I guess that's something you're going to have to look at, Ben, see what you can bring back for the next meeting.
Come back for a discussion.
Anything else someone wants to bring up?
I haven't got to go through this, but...
Line my line?
Or section, intersection, anyhow.
Covered more, we've covered all of this.
A lot of it.
Yeah.
I don't see if we can change it.
We've covered the fences, we've covered the accessory buildings, except for the height, which we're trying to adjust now.
Yeah, well, run back to the beginning of level three, the first one is what we're striking. I'm pretty sure that's getting struck because it's obsolete or contradicts.
Yeah, it's a state law, now that basically says we can't do that, so...
Yeah, contradicts a newer state law. I think that's what was number nine and is now number eight, is still part of that.
Correct. Yeah, number eight has to do with some statute changes too, also.
That covers, we're on page 19, that's all covered by that. What we're basically required to do, page 20, is what we talked about last month, with changing the table again. And order to discuss tonight and tonight with the accessory building size. We talked about... Number six is part of the RV thing, I think, right? Is basically why that language is in there.
Six, yeah, that order, because otherwise about, came in because we had some changes regarding RVs.
Yeah. Number eight is the box deaves.
Yep.
We just talked about that. The number on the next page, number three, is some cleanup language, basically. The number on the next page, three, is some cleanup language, basically.
Let her see there is kind of the one, do you want to reduce that setback for those kinds of structures? There's the steps, like stoops.
Ten feet?
I think we just leave it alone for the side yard.
It's on a corner side yard is where it affected. You've got, you're on a corner lot. Your front yard is considered the shortest dimension. And then the other corner or the other side is considered your side yard. That's what fifteen feet plus. So the front yard, it's usually a thirty-foot setback. The side, it's reduced to fifteen. If this, this would reduce it even further if we would go that way.
I think fifteen feet sounded good.
What, what do you consider uncovered porch versus a deck? Can you explain the difference in those two to me?
That's a good question. I don't know, I could look at the definitions more closely, but I think to me, they're basically the same thing. And all of these are, you know, with that clause that says they do not extend above the height of the floor level. So this wouldn't apply to like a second level deck extending out. It would only be a first level.
So stoop, does that be uncovered too or is that covered?
Could be either way, yeah.
Well, that's a wonder, we've got uncovered porch, but we don't have uncovered stoops. If somebody goes step on the side of the house.
See if that is definition. There's no definition of stoop, there's no definition that it proves uncovered in it. That'll be something we'll have to address as we go through each section too, is do we need to change definitions? I haven't really, not even gotten into that yet. But if there's ones you want us to come back to and make sure we've talked about in terms of definitions, we should do that.
Well, you should have definition or strike and what we do.
Right.
Shouldn't listen to something anyway, have no definition for it.
Yeah, if you control, there's a difference in uncovered porch and a deck and a stoop. Do you have a definition of definition or I'll strike them?
Yeah, we have a definition back there.
No?
We do for decks, yeah.
Put a deck on patio. Corner of the porch, consider it patio? I don't know. I don't know what to do, I suppose.
Patio is not a great, that's a call, really, if I'm not involved.
It's an uncovered porch.
From a, from a, sometimes you get a building code at least.
What year did they adopt this?
Seventy-four, ninety-six.
The original ordinance?
Original ordinance was seventy-four.
Okay, the whole, that was the whole tab?
Yeah.
Yeah. A lot of it's associated with that. And that's frankly why, I mean, when I first came here two and a half years ago, that was part of the things that was kind of mentioned to me right away. Or as they were having was, we need to go through the ordinance because it's updated, so.
Especially eleven.
So we've been doing that kind of on a piecemeal basis, and now it kind of gave to the point where it's okay now. Can't do much more piecemeal without getting into other sections, so let's do it all once. But yeah, a lot of these ordinances are the same language that was in place in nineteen seventy-four. All of it, well...